Moving on to the facility use fee approval. Director Doll and Coordinator Fern, are they both here?
Evening Chair White, members of the board. At the last board meeting, I don't know if this will stay up. We presented a fee increase of 5% across the board on facility use rentals. And so we're asking the board tonight to approve that recommendation.
Is there a motion to accept the facility use changes in the charging?
Second.
By Jessica and second by Mary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries seven zero.
Did you say aye or no?
Yeah. All right, moving down to activity and arts fees. Director Marshall, oh, in his stead, we have Director Beth Fuller.
Good evening, Director, Directors and Chair White. I am here representing the Activities Office and everything was presented at the last meeting. So here to answer questions if needed.
All right, is there a motion to accept the arts and activities fees increases for next year?
So may.
Director Johnson, second by Director Franz. Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries seven zero. All right, moving down to the proposed neighborhood closure and facility consolidation. Dr. Thomas.
Thank you Chair White, Board of Directors. Our team is here tonight to respond to some of the conversation that we had a few weeks ago with the board. And we have the original presentation for our community and the board to just kind of have a running record. So we've updated and revised the original slides, basically the cover slide through slides 16 where it starts on appendix. And in the appendix is where we begin kind of the new conversation of some of the updates that we've shared or that we're going to share with you this evening. And I just want to, so on slide 17, which is the comparison of facility transition matrix, we, we looked at a variety of different criteria to land on what our, you know, ultimate recommendation was to open up the conversation with the board. And so you can take a look on the left-hand side and just as a refresher, some driving criteria for us is looking at ways that we can create operational efficiencies, and in this case our buildings, minimize our remodeling needs, and then how we may be able to enhance or support future programmatic growth, and then also ways that we might be able to generate additional revenue. And so when you're looking, when we looked at the three different scenarios, closing Westwood was one that, and then, you know, Lodal and the DSC just kind of stay where they're currently at, that was probably the least feasible opportunity for us to look at because it really boxed us in and gave us no ability to address efficiencies, future growth, or address revenue issues. So then when we take a look at Westwood and then move the DSC to Westwood, we could create building efficiencies. Westwood, as you may recall, was designed really for large space classrooms, particularly the HVAC systems would be very costly to remodel. And we would not have the opportunity to increase or enhance the dual immersion program, which we see to have a demand both internally and externally from our, from our district. And so to govern that more as a magnet program within our school portfolio is something that we would be stifled at doing. But we would be able to address some of the additional funds because we could potentially look at alternate space within Westwood as potential partner lease space, et cetera. When we looked at close, the closure of Westwood and then moving Lodal to Westwood and then moving the DSC to Grainwood where Lodal currently resides, that essentially checked all the boxes in terms of a variety of different scenarios of the criteria that we are prioritizing. So that's what brought us to that initial recommendation for discussion to the, with the board a few weeks ago. And moving forward, we've got several other conversations that our team is gonna kind of tag-team tonight to share some additional information based upon some of the questions and/or discussion points that were raised at our previous conversation. So I'll go to Executive Director Emily Herman, who will speak to some of the elementary school closures.
Thank you Chair White, members of the board. So on this next slide, you'll see, as you might recall from the last presentation, the building leadership team along with Executive Director Dan Edwards went through the building and identified all the instructional spaces that we have in our school. So didn't count bathroom spaces, hallways, all the other spaces that might be on other reports, specifically looking at actual classroom instructional spaces that are available. And then defined what the capacity is within each of those schools. Last presentation, we looked at what the average class sizes would be across the district if we closed one. And then there were some additional questions on what might that look like if we closed two. So this slide is providing a second comparison to show if we closed two school, elementary schools, I apologize, what the total sections per grade level we would have, what our anticipated grade capacity would look like, which would then lead to what are, based off of the projected enrollment, what our district, why class size averages would look per grade. And as you can see, if we closed two elementary schools, multiple of our grade levels would be above our current discussion cap. And if you recall, we have a target, which is where we hope to be at, and then we have a discussion cap, which is where we're saying that's the largest it can be at before we have additional conversations about additional adult supports in those spaces. So this was just to address that, that additional question on what actual instructional spaces we had available compared to what it looked like to close one elementary school versus the two.
The other conversation point that was brought up was, does the DS, where, where could the DSC go? And I also want to just clarify, you know, some of the comments in the discussion that we had a few weeks ago, how some of that was received by many of the staff here at the DSC was that DSC could be bifurcated and just kind of put away where we might have extra space throughout the district without taking into consideration, I think, the continuity of services, the customer service orientation, and the necessary collaboration amongst departments. And so just want to reiterate the fact that, you know, like a school, the staff here at the DSC have significant value and are the ones oftentimes behind the curtain, that of the front stage performances that are happening in our classrooms every single day. And so we want to be mindful that, you know, we don't just move the DSC any old space where we might have, you know, excess space, because some of the excess space that was discussed in terms of total square footage also included underneath the stairwell, receiving dock spaces, et cetera. So it wasn't a true comparison of where we could actually house people or offices. And so just want to break that down for the board so you understand. We do have about 56 staff members in the DSC that are supporting the schools on a daily basis. This building that we currently occupy is about 22,000 square feet. And that also includes this primary building that we're in this evening, as well as across the parking lot where we have the garage storage for some of our maintenance vehicles, as well as data storage for kind of paper archive storage that we legally need to maintain. I want to also acknowledge that within this current blueprint of this building, we do have about 1,500 square feet or so of hallways and vestibules that's included in that space. So I'm mindful that, you know, we wouldn't account for that in terms of occupancy, in terms of another building that we'd be looking for. So, and then also, we will have to address the garage storage of that 600 square feet. So that, that is something that we want to make sure that we address wherever we potentially might go, depending on the action of the board. And again, going back to the notion of distributing the DSC across multiple sites, it will be very inefficient in terms of our, just our daily operations. The level of collaboration that this team is doing is significant and to travel, you know, 15 minutes from one side to the other side of the district, if you're in opposite ends of the, of the district would be highly inefficient. As well as, as a parent, if you're going in to get support services here at the DSC, you may be here for more than just one thing. And if we have to have parents going from building to building to building to get their needs met, again, I think it just breeds greater inefficiencies. And, and so we want to make sure that as we consider the needs of the DSC, the space that we might need to occupy, as well as balancing out, optimizing those resources as well in terms of the occupancy space and customer service.
My question, Dr. Thomas, that I think is worthy of getting clarification from, for myself and for others. So you had mentioned the capacity numbers, and when we look at our finding reports, and we look at, like say for instance, the high school has capacity of 35, 3,400 students, and the enrollment in 25 was 2,850, is that not referring to actual audience?
Now, so we're gonna go through the next, let us go ahead Director Atkinson and answer that in the next slide on our secondary capacity for our middle and high school. And I'll have Dr. Edwards speak to some of that in terms of our availability of what's being occupied for instruction and what would be available.
Yeah, so I'm assuming the 200, the 35, 400, they wouldn't be having classrooms behind stairwells, it would be accounted for in the capacity numbers. So that's, I'm just trying to understand, you said...
We'll get, we'll get to that on the next slide.
We'll speak to that right now on this next slide.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
So at the last board meeting, when we had this discussion, it was asked of the capacity at the secondary buildings. And at that point, I had simply looked at the elementary buildings. So since that conversation, I have, I did engage with our, each of our respective principals, Dr. Bieseck at the high school and Mr. Kowalski representing both middle schools. And looking at ahead to next year with our projected enrollment, as well as our projected staffing, to identify those classrooms that are current, currently projected, and I'll speak of the middle school specifically at this time, there are projected to be five classrooms vacant at Hidden Oaks and two classrooms vacant at Twin Oaks, for a total of seven classrooms. And just for comparative size perspective, the average classroom is approximately 950 square feet. I didn't do per classroom, but the classrooms that I was looking at in conversation with Mr. Kowalski are those classrooms that fit into that category. And so that is what our current projection is, taking into account the reductions in staff. As you recall, at the middle school for next year, we have three FTE fewer than we do this year, and taking into account the usage of those spaces. And define that as any classroom that is used for two class periods or fewer per day. So we're on a six-period day, so if a classroom is utilized for more than two periods, i.e. three, or more, that is half-used classroom. And we would be able to merge a couple of classrooms, but we, we feel that the seven classrooms is what is available at this time at the middle school. Similarly, at the high school, as you recall, we are moving back or moving the MNCAPs program into the high school, which will take up a significant amount of space that's currently not occupied. So we are taking the square footage that we are essentially losing by not having the MNCAPs program in Lakeville and moving that into the high school. And that is going to occupy essentially wing plus at the high school. And we therefore will have six classrooms that would meet that criteria projecting for next year. Additional to that, and this I think should get to addressing your question Director Atkinson around how those spaces are utilized, we, as we know, we have had increased need for services, specialized services programming, where our numbers in our ASD program, as well as our life skills program, have grown significantly in recent years. And those, those spaces or those students and the supports and services that they require do require additional classroom space. So when we talk about, every, every student is not a student that equals all the same number or amount of square footage that they require. And so that is what's intended to be accounted for there in that description paragraph there you see around the specialized programming due to that changing enrollment and specialized supports. And then finally, with this, with the classrooms once again at the high school, approximately 950 square feet, typical classroom at the secondary level. And so you can see the amount of square footage that could be realized by utilizing those spaces at two different campuses, three buildings, would be approximately 13, just under 13,000 square feet that would be available. So our, our conclusion therefore is that there is insufficient space to adequately meet the needs of the previous slide where we talked about the needs of the DSC staff.
Any questions about that particular portion?
Yes, can someone please, Dr. Thomas, did you say that somebody, it was, it was requested or an idea was to have offices under stairwells or classrooms under stairwells?
No, no, there was, forgive me if that, if that was interpreted that way.
Okay, I didn't think that's what you meant.
No, I was, I was stating that when we were having discussions about available square footage across our campuses in the district based on enrollment calculations, the, the square footage that was being shared was total square footage and not necessarily instructional square footage. And so, so that's the distinction I want to be clear about because when you look at a map and you see the total square footage divided by how many kids, and you can look in the budget book, and if you do the math, you can say, oh, then they occupy X amount of square feet. We have this much extra space in the, in the, in that building. Well, if we're looking at total square footage, that includes bathroom space, you know, loading dock space, under the stairwell, you know, the hallway spaces that maybe a kid will sit in there and read something, but it's not like a classroom space. We can't use it as square, usable instructional square footage. And that's the distinction I was trying to convey. So sorry if that was interpreted wrong.
No, thank you, I was just making sure.
And on that note of utilizing space with some of our littles, one of the conversations that came up last week, or a couple of weeks ago, was around the notion of Edgewood. And so Joel Doll is gonna come forward and talk a little bit about Edgewood. And this is kind of a unique occupancy because we have staggered usage. So similar to periods of the day at our secondary that Dr. Edwards is just referencing, I know a Board Director referenced being at that site and seeing that there was no, nobody there and acknowledged the fact that there's an AM and PM and was likely there during the transition where there was nobody really there. So I'm gonna, I wanted to make sure that irrespective of those transition times, how that space is utilized looks a little different than our more traditional school campuses in terms of percentage of occupancy. So Director Doll, if you would go, walk through Edgewood.
Certainly, Chair White, members of the board. On the slide on Edgewood, you can see, so we currently have 24 what we consider classroom spaces that are available in Edgewood. Not all of those are used for classrooms. We have some that are actually used as office space. On there, you can see we have about 91 staff that work out of Edgewood. And we house, like our birth to three staff have one of those spaces where it's broken into cubes. So not all of those are actual classroom spaces, but you can see the breakdown in the box. We have eight preschool classrooms, six ECSE, and so on. So that's how our spaces are used in there. And as Dr. Thomas mentioned, utilization of those classrooms varies not only by day, but as, as well as morning versus afternoon. Average morning utilization is around 85%. And that's, and I say average because Monday, Wednesday, Friday mornings might look different than Tuesday, Thursday mornings, just based on which classes we're offering, which ones are running, et cetera. Afternoon is around 60%, and that's pretty typical in preschool where you still have young kids who nap in the afternoons. So our afternoon enrollments are generally, are typically lower than our morning enrollments. So that's what our actual utilization is, again, about 85% in the mornings, 60% in the afternoons. There was a question about, I think in the budget book stating 73 students. As you can see at the top, or in the slide, we have 296 students that are currently enrolled in our preschool program. The 73 students, just to clarify, that's the ADM, not the number of students that we serve. ADM is only reported in early ed for ECSE students, our birth to five, and those who are in VPK. So that doesn't include any of our general ed, preschool age students. Another question was raised about some of the staffing. So we, currently we employ a .6 LSN at Edgewood. That position is shared with other buildings, but we have some time available for health needs of our students in Edgewood. That is covered under our SPED program. We also have, or we don't have a media specialist, but we pay for, we purchase some time essentially from the Laola media specialist over the last year, about year and a half, to do some organization of the media center at Edgewood. Because we don't have a media specialist, there was some organization that needed to be done, we needed to review materials. And so that was paid out of the O4 fund to have them come over and help kind of do a refresh of our media center. The, all of the other staff outside of ECSE are all paid for and covered out of the O4 fund in that building. I think that was the only questions that I received on that. But as you can see from the enrollment numbers, and again, our utilization, we're similar to what our elementaries are as current utilization, around that 85%. Other questions?
Director Atkinson.
Sorry, I have one question, Director Doll, about the preschool, the circulatrans preschool, 296 students. Aren't those housed in other schools though, like Jeffers Pond and...
Yes, we have, so we have two classes that are housed out of Jeffers Pond. We have our nature-based preschool program. I believe that's around 40 students that are housed over at JP.
So yeah, so I, I think my question was, I'm trying to get an understanding of that 73 number, 73 capacity number that's in the annual report as well as the budget book. So that's where it's, it's maybe not as straightforward as we think it is, but...
Yeah, and again, the, the 73 is for ADM, and because our students aren't full-time, they're only attending certain number of days for half-day, we don't get a full ADM per student. And that ADM only includes ECSE students that are birth to five, and our VPK are our voluntary preschool students. It doesn't include any of our general ed students who attend our preschool program.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions particular to what Director Doll just presented? Okay?
Thank you.
So before we go into, just, I know I made some of these points at the front side, but just to give some additional rationale, with Laola going to Westwood, we can actually double the potential expansion to that program along with looking at additions of pre-K, Spanish immersion. So, and, and just knowing that we've talked to some of our community partners and they've got waiting lists and their model is very contained to what they want to do. So we have a demand that we could actually meet with pre-K and Spanish immersion. So we've been having conversations with Richie and his team about that. But that would allow us to grow and, and leverage additional interest in that immersion. Looking at Grainwood, so Grainwood has the opportunity for it to become a, an academic program as well as central service kind of mixed hub for a variety of things. And I just want to speak to that as we're beginning to have some early conversations to kind of vision out what we could utilize Grainwood for. So aside from the, the occupancy of DSC, and we'll speak to some of the IT changes that we've made, because that was initially part of this conversation at Grainwood, that's no longer there, I'll let Marcus speak to that in a second. But aside from the DSC, we also are looking at ways that we can co-locate additional services within that building, particularly our transitions program that our, our students that get serviced up to 22 years of age oftentimes are out in our community doing work-related skills-based training and life readiness training. And that is something that we have an interest to explore of bringing that program back to our home district. Right now, that's currently through a partnership with Southwest Metro. And as much as we appreciate that, I, I think from a cost standpoint, we have savings that we could realize bringing that program back under our roof. I would also say that more importantly, our students are not then bust out to communities that aren't their home to do these skills-based training and life readiness skills trainings with, you know, community-based employers, that the likelihood that they'd be driving out to Chaska or Chanhasan to, to work with some of the things that they might have to manage through are, are might, might not be that, that feasible. So partnering with our local community within Prior Lake Savage and the surrounding, they have a better opportunity now to actually develop those skills where they actually live, in close proximity to where they live. On top of that, co-locating transitions programs in other adult-related services centers is also another plus for them to be modeled around an adult work community, not just necessarily a school classroom context. Many districts that I've been a part in, we've had our own standalone transition but co-located adult district-wide programming services for that very reason. I would also say that we have an opportunity that we're considering some other of our, our, our community ed programs, so community ed that currently resides there with a lot of administrative and some classroom space. But talking with Director Doll and his team, we are looking at optional ways with partnering with other surrounding districts to host some other community-based programming that we are currently doing through another intermediate district. And again, saving resources on contract fees for those intermediate partnership fees and bringing some of those services back into our, our space. And we have ample room to do that at Grainwood as well. So I would envision Grainwood to be a community ed, special ed, and district services hub for, you know, PLSAS, and really maximize the utility of that space and also save on funding on an annual basis as well. And potentially through community ed, it could generate additional fund for revenue depending on, you know, the type of program and the demand for the program. So just wanted to add that additional rationale that I began to speak to earlier as to why the moves kind of relegated to that one recommendation of Grainwood versus Westwood. Several of you had some questions around real estate, and I'm gonna ask that Director Powers come forward to talk a little bit more on some of the conversations that he has had in the past. And I think he explored a couple of questions that you had from our last conversation that were new about some of the real estate data.
Okay, let me start off, Chair White and members of the board. One of the questions that came up was asking if we had gotten a second opinion on the valuations that I've received from Ceron Properties. I have reached out and I'm working with two other commercial realtors, actually meeting with one of them yet this week, so that we can talk more about potential valuations for the buildings, as well as potential if we were to lease those spaces. The challenge we run into with leasing a space like a school is the limited number of groups that would be interested in a space like that. We're still gonna run into specialty-type schools, religious-type schools, other charter schools. And as I've mentioned before, I, that would not be the direction I would recommend, just because we would have a, a chance...
because we would have a chance to lose our own enrollment for that type of a situation. But I did want to include those things in there that I am still researching.
Excuse me, I just want to ask a quick question. Leasing also means that we, as a district, would be responsible for maintenance and all that, right?
Correct.
Is, I would assume that that's almost as large, if not a bigger priority, to not lease because of the resource constraints and the potential cost? Like if the HVAC system went out, we would be still responsible for that?
If the cost benefit wasn't high enough to make it worthwhile, I would never recommend leasing either to anyone else. So it would have to, it would have to meet that cost-benefit threshold.
Depends on the cost-benefit analysis.
Yeah, so that is one of the things that I will be talking with them about on the realtors, to make sure that I can get that last I dotted and T crossed.
Thank you.
Just because that information had come up. Oh, let's see. So we talked a little bit about the valuations themselves, that was me working with Ceron Properties. Their valuations actually came up to basically the same number that the county has our properties valued at. So it was within a pretty close percentage point, which was, it's good to see that.
So Dan, can I, just a quick question. So then is it, is it worth your time to get comparison quotes? I mean, every realtor, commercial or not, is going off the exact same comparables, the exact same sales numbers, and ultimately, a building's only worth what somebody's going to pay for it anyway.
Yeah.
So is it worth your time to even go down that road?
Director, members of the board, it's honestly, it's, I don't think it hurts for me to talk with them. They might have a different idea of how we could use the properties. But I don't think, Ceron Properties looked at the sold properties that had happened everywhere in the metro area of this type of property, so that they could get valuations based on square footage to show us. And those valuations, I've mentioned this before, they vary all over the place, but the maximum valuation, the maximum amount we can get for every location, is to sell it to someone that's going to use it the same way we are. If we wanted to put a limitation on that, we'd be looking at, at most, half of the value of that property to use it for some other thing. So it's, those are the numbers that they couldn't get around those types of things when I was talking with them. One of the other things we really did talk a lot about was time on market. Something like the district office time on market, six to twelve months. That's a good average for a commercial property like this. One of the challenges that they were talking to me about was selling a property that doesn't already have a tenant in it that's going to stay with that property makes it a little bit less valuable to them, so it may make it a little bit more challenging to sell. For the schools, it really varies greatly. It depends on, Lakeville went and purchased the ALC downtown. They had a use for it, they've wanted that building for a long time. So the sale of that went really pretty quickly. I mentioned a while ago about the Burnsville schools. One of the challenges that we had was, they had a restriction on theirs as well. They didn't want a school to be purchased from their property, someone come in and run a school there. So it took the sale of Metcalf almost five years. They're still fighting the sale of Sioux Trail. The city didn't approve the initial sale. So this is five years down the road, and they've sold one of the three properties. But there are other locations, Minneapolis more than willing to sell one of their locations to a competitor because they were just getting rid of the property. So in those sales situations, it still took more than a year to get those things finalized. So on average, it varies between a year and a half to five years for those things. And I'll verify those numbers again with the other companies that I'm going to be talking with. But it really does depend on, I mean, they say location is everything with properties. Five Hox is a better location. Could it sell easier than some other place? Possibly. But those restrictions come in again. If we don't want to sell it to another competing school type of operation, that brings that valuation way down. Were there any other questions about the real estate data?
Did we have the valuations for Greenwood? I believe you mentioned we had them, but I don't think they've been shared.
I did share the initial numbers, and I can, I can mention them, and I can share the, what I got from Ceron Properties, too. So Laola Del Lago, I'll get a little closer to the mic. Honestly, they were about the same between Laola Del Lago and Five Hox, per square footage cost, or per square footage sale. And they averaged about seven-point-six million for Greenwood, and Five Hox was seven-point-eight-six. So they're really pretty similar for the different-sized buildings, mostly because of where they're located.
Sure. Thank you for that.
So some of the information that we are sharing with you is ongoing savings and some of its one-time cost savings, and so Director Fredrickson will kind of delineate how some of that is breaking down.
Thank you. This breakdown is assuming that our forecasted enrollment numbers will hold true. If enrollment changes over what we're forecasting, then obviously we'll have to recalculate these. But the ongoing cost savings by closing the building and then consolidating the programming, we're projecting, depending, again, depending on the border changes, the, we could reduce between twenty-two and a half and twenty-eight and a half FTEs, so between one-point-nine million and two-point-seven million. Those would be ongoing. Again, assuming you're not going to gain the enrollment back, you're, those staff will be gone year over year. The transportation savings, we would see some, assume we're going to see some transportation savings, and it'd be dependent on what those boundary changes look like. Utility savings, we won't have to have utilities at this building, so, and there would be some savings. We're already heating and having utilities at Greenwood, so there should be some cost reductions. We don't know what that'll look like at this point, but we can certainly monitor it as we move over there. The one-time savings and cost, we would have to have moving and remodeling expenses, and we're predicting that's between four-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand and six-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars. And then, of course, the sale of this building would net us between two-point-six and three-point-five million dollars. That would be one-time savings. Other considerations that we can kind of keep monitoring is if we move Laola Del Lago over to Westwood to give them more space, it's possible that we could see some enrollment creases there, which would increase our enrollment and obviously increase revenue. If there's any questions, I will try to answer them.
Any questions on that first part of the presentation?
Yes.
Director Olsted.
Director Fredrickson, the transportation savings, too, could there be, and this is kind of hard to say, too, just because we're going out for an RFP for transportation about this earlier than when this would happen, but that could factor in? Do you see that as being significant?
Again, I'm not sure what our, what kind of bids we'll get when we send out the RFP process. I mean, hopefully, it will be a reduction of what we're seeing now. Because the school that we're proposing to close is kind of centrally located, we're thinking that there will be some transportation savings, but honestly, until we get those boundary changes and kind of let everything settle, I don't even feel comfortable giving you a range yet.
That's fair.
It's just going to depend on where the kids end up.
Yeah. I have an open enrollment question. I'm not sure if this is the place to ask it, or if you'd like me to wait and ask it. Okay. So open enrollment, so obviously, if this happens, you know, we go through boundary changes, and please forgive me, I don't want to be crass, but the money follows the student, right? So is there a plan? I did get a question from a community member about open enrollment. Are there any plans to cap anything or close anything? Or once you're a Laker, always a Laker with boundary changes? I'm just trying to figure that out, and I wasn't quite sure how to answer that succinctly.
So Director Olsted, if I may, so our students who are currently open-enrolled with us, they would be offered to reconsider a priority placement one and priority placement two, if you will. They would stay with us, they would have the option to stay with us. I think the other question that might be within your question is for any new families that aren't in our district. And again, until we understand the boundaries and what our true capacities would be, that would let us know how close are we to reaching capacity in our schools, and would that potentially govern any new open enrollment based upon our ability to take more students from outside of the district? But again, I think we'd have to look at what happens with the boundary changes, should this move forward in some form or fashion. But those who are with us, they would have an option to choose alternate schools to continue to stay open-enrolled if we have that space in that school for them.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow on that, so just for the students, like, for example, if we are closing Westwood, those students would be given that option, not everyone?
That is correct. So not every open enrollment student that's open-enrolled would be subject, any student, open enrollment student that's open-enrolled that would be impacted by that building closure, they would be able to have an option to submit for another, another open enrollment. Yeah.
If I could go one step further, but even in boundary changes, every student, maybe not every student is affected.
Potentially, so if I'm, if I, if, so if I'm, so if this proposal moves forward and Westwood is the school that we choose to repurpose in a different way, those students then would get options to go to another neighborhood school. Equally, if I'm a student who's being impacted because of boundary changes, and my open enrollment school of choice was School A, but now I'm getting redistrict or re-boundary to School B, but I wanted School A, and I can't go into that school, I would have to say, yes, I'll go into that school, or I would open enroll to a different school, if that makes sense. I would choose, I would apply to open enroll to a different school if I did not want to go to enrollment B.
Okay.
You know, new-boundary School B.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Several of you had brought up some questions last time around some of our IT costs and remodeling costs. And so I have our team here, Director Malazo and Powers, to talk a little bit about some of the changes that we are exploring, that I think were some valid points brought forward by several board directors around the IT closets, and then also some of the remodeling components. So.
Chair White, Board Directors, Dr. Thomas. Good evening. Marcus Malazo, Director of Technology. In regards to the estimates for moving and remodeling, what's included in that four-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand
to six-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand, we have listed here three-hundred-thousand for updated security camera servers and integrated phone systems that have reached end-of-life. Both of those systems are legacy units, and this is my fourteenth year in the district, and the phone system was put in the year before I got here. We are having issues with our security server with capacity and with hard drives failing, so that is what is making up that estimated cost. Five-hundred, or fifty-thousand to a hundred-thousand for a large conference room, AV equipment, that includes spaces for professional development, school board meetings, and more. The current AV equipment that we're all using here was put in in 2014. So the microphones, the cameras, all they had in equipment, and that Liz is operating right now is over eleven years, or is eleven years old, and it's also end-of-life. In regards to the IT moving setup and associated logistics, fifty-thousand to a hundred-thousand. I know there's been lots of conversations around that picture, that's our main, that's our head-in, that's where all of our equipment is, and where do we put that equipment? And we will work with all of our vendors and contractors to determine a permanent solution so that we're not moving it two or three times, right? We want to find a permanent solution where we know that that equipment and its updated equipment, as we lifecycle equipment out, isn't in a permanent location, so we're not double-handling, triple-handling equipment and paying for that move over and over again. And then you, about doors?
The remainder of that amount, seventy-five to a hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand dollars, is actually the creation of those office spaces in that, in that school. Some of that is going to be security doors. We would need to add security doors to make it is more similar like the district offices right now versus the school. There are going to be common areas where people are coming in and out that we still don't want them to have regular access to where the office staff would normally be. So we'd be looking at between three and four different security doors. Depending on where we would put, if we were to move and create the boardroom over there, one of the costs that we'd be looking at, at least in two of the areas that I considered, we would actually have to add emergency exits out of those spaces that don't have them right now because of the capacities and the distance to the doors. So if we were to use the current media center as an example, I would probably need to add two emergency exits from that space. If we were to use the cafeteria, similar type of thing, I would need to make sure that there are two emergency exits out of that space, or would be limited pretty greatly by the fire marshal on how many people we could have in that space. And then some of the rest of that is going to be, like I mentioned, upgrading the bathrooms. Little, the toilet is about a foot little off the ground, and I don't know many adults that can use those. So stuff like those things, we would need to change out. The toilets wouldn't necessarily go away, that would be stuff we would keep in stock. But there are other changes, potentially adding some different walls, some removable walls of some type, or whatever. So there's a little bit of materials that we would need for that. And I've mentioned a few times, that's, that's my bailiwick, that's, I was in construction for a long time, so I'll be there with them, helping to design those spaces and build them. And that's the reason we can get away with our remodel costs being as low as they are when we're talking about all those things. I can't do the fire exits, but a good chunk of the rest of that, we will be able to do in-house.
Just to that point, Director Powers, I liken some of the work that your crew could actually do versus contract out, similar to what we did with the classroom vestibles at Five Hox. And we put up those partition walls and things of that nature that we augmented that space to align with the new fire code for those exits that we didn't install, but the interior we could manage. So again, thank you to your team for being able to do, carry some of that.
Director Powers, are you certified in low voltage?
I am not.
Shoot, okay.
We're not either.
I know.
Any other questions?
Yes, how did you get to these cost numbers?
Estimates based on, or at least for mine, it's estimates based on the spaces themselves. When I've converted other bathrooms, it would be, depending on how large the bathroom was, it could be between three and five thousand dollars. The larger the bathroom, obviously, the more expensive, it could be as much as ten or fifteen thousand dollars, but usually not, and I'm not expecting that in these cases. If you're looking at an emergency exit, a regular security door between three and five thousand dollars, an emergency exit coming out of there because of the slightly different design of those things is going to be closer to five thousand dollars. So those are the costs that we've typically run into. We would get firm estimates for all of those types of things that we can't do in-house, and then have very specific material lists. Because of the dollar amounts we're talking, those would be things that I would come to the board to show you where the costs were and exactly where we were going to be allocating those funds. Because it's going to be, for every one of those things, the total project for each section is going to be well over twenty-five thousand dollars. So when I'm looking to do that type of a spend, I would make sure and bring that to you so that you could see exactly where we're spending that money.
And some of the other numbers are based off of current, like snapshot and time quotes that we've received from vendors. If we were to purchase a system today, what would it cost? This is, it's important to note, too, that all this is before possible E-rate, the E-rate program, and some of this is considered category two, others is not. But we would, whatever products that we go out and receive- But we would, whatever products that we go out and receive our three quotes for, get our bids, do an RFP, depending on the pricing, right, where it falls. We would, anything that would qualify, either Category One or Category Two for E-Rate, we would submit to see if we can get some reimbursement for that as well.
One other question. All of this is going to happen before the sale of the building, so am I correct in that?
It depends on how fast it sells.
Okay, all right. Given that, what, what fund is it coming out of?
That's, that's a good question, and I've looked at a couple of different ways we can do this. I haven't shared this conversation with many people yet, but one of the things that we can look at for the building, this building, is actually moving people over at a different rate. We can wait until this building sells to do the majority of the remodeling over there. The sale is going to take a number of months. So when we get to that point where it's, we're going to have the sale, it's going to be coming through, we're scheduling it for three months down the road, we have to go through all the closing, different things for closings, that will give us a percentage of time that we need to finalize everything over at the other school. There will be a lot of different things, though. There are some, there are some capital funds that are available for us to use, and they're, actually, that's one of the beauties of this, is the sale of this building, we can't use in our normal O1 funds. We can use it for other capital things, so it can be reimbursed back into that account once we've spent that money in that type of remodel. So it's, there again, we're aiming for making sure that it's, it's not hitting our budget, and we're going to be, we'll have to push that money around a little bit. But I suspect if we delay the actual remodel over there until we absolutely need to, it'll lower that impact.
It would be capital for IT as well.
Yeah.
Any other questions? I think it's important to remember that no matter what we do with this, with the staff that's here, it's going to cost us something, no matter where they end up. And I think, is similar to the IT box picture I see here, I think we should be looking toward a goal of as permanent a space for the DSC as possible. Now, nothing might be, we thought this place was permanent. That's not the case. But I think that should be the goal, to create a space that can be the most permanent setup possible. So if there are changes in the future, that, that doesn't get affected again. We're right back here figuring out what we're going to do. So to me, right now, it looks like that's, that's Greenwood, but I think that's, that should be the goal, because we don't want to spend this money again. Director Atkinson?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. With the talk of what you just said, moving into Greenwood, but then we have to wait until we actually make all the moves to remodel. It almost feels like the DNP decision is we're putting the cart before the horse on this, when ultimately, the DSC seems like it has to be the last decision, because all the other decisions need to come first. Am I not understanding that correctly, or? I mean, you can't move, you can't move anybody into Greenwood until Greenwood is moved to Westwood, which is kind of a whole year out, correct?
Director Atkinson, members of the board, definitely nothing's going to happen for at least a year. That's, Westwood and Greenwood are both going to be open as their current existence through the next year. So best-case scenario, best case, when we look at closing, if we agree to close the school and move forward with Lola Delago moving into Westwood, we would look at the first part of next year in the summertime, moving out the people that are in Westwood, wherever they're going, if they're, wherever those resources are being reallocated to, if they are. Once that's complete, then yes, then we would move the folks from Greenwood over to Westwood. The timeframe for that, middle of the summer to the end of the summer. The soonest we would look at possibly getting the DSC move happening is going to be after we're done moving all of the Greenwood or the Lola Delago people.
So from what I understand, and what's been explained to us at study sessions of all those board meetings about the timeframe, is that first, we need to vote to close the school, because we need to notify.
We need to notify.
Okay, so we can't move anyways, because we need that year-advanced notification. So that's been in every single meeting, so of course, we have to wait a year. And then, once we notify them we're closing the school, we have to do it the following year. We don't, we can't just leave it open indefinitely. So there's your, if we notify the state we're closing a school, and we tell them a timeframe, we have to be out. So, and we want to get this property on the market as soon as possible, at least notify realtors, notify people, because it's going to take that time. The sooner we do that, the better, particularly given the economy that we're looking at, that they, they have that option, and we want to be able to have people at least get something on contract when they know about it, knowing we may put conditions on it or not. But we can't move legally prior to a year. So, and we can't stay after we tell the state we're closing an elementary school, from what I understand.
Yeah, we have a timeframe of when we have to notify the state that we are closing a building.
Right.
I don't know that they say you're going to have to move immediately, but they're, it kind of is implied, because they eliminate that cost center for that building, because it's no longer in existence. So essentially, yes, but I guess technically, we'd have a little bit of time.
Well, if we notified them, we're going to close it for the following, for the '26, '27 school year. We have to close it for the '26, '27 school year.
Correct, correct.
And that's what we would want to do.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
And I mentioned, when I was mentioning the timeframes, members of the board, it's, that's for the moves. You are correct. Once we decide that we're going to close a school, and possibly sell and move the DSC, we would notify the realtors so that they could start their work, because we know that's not going to happen right away, and we want to let people know as soon as we can. We've all, we know that, actually, the people that are trying to sell the property next door are the people I'm meeting with yet this week. So they will be excited to have that conversation, and then we can start that process. And then, like I say, once everything is sold and moved, then we can worry about all the rest of that stuff, too. But we have to start the process of even selling the DSC now, as soon as we make this decision.
I mean, if I may, I, the piece I'm still struggling with is, is moving DSC staff into a bigger building and paying to retrofit doing so, right? Until we're really, you know, we're not savings based on the sale and then the cost of retrofitting. It just, it doesn't get us there, right? So that's where I'm really struggling, just to think long-term. And why I asked about the valuations of a building, so I, I mean, I, I fully appreciate, you know, the moving of, or closure of Westwood and proposing to move Greenwood, Lola Delago, sorry, into Westwood. But then, can we take more time to talk about what building we're selling, whether it's DSC or Greenwood? Again, I know you mentioned, like, the transition program and other ideas we might have to put people and students' bodies into that space also and utilize it, but I don't know that we've done a lot of research on, like, costs on that, like Southwest Metro, the reason districts use that, 12, 13 districts, is because it's more cost-efficient. These are very specialized programs, right? So I, I mean, it sounds amazing to bring that here, but what does that cost? I don't know. Or, you know, do we have contractual commitments to Southwest Metro?
We've done some early runs, and we would actually end up realizing cost savings for that program to come back. And we're, we're still looking at some of those numbers, so I don't want to share.
Be helpful to have them.
But Director Chuka and I looked at the forecast and what she is anticipating, and there's a, there's a decent return for us. And like I said, in the larger scope of things, I think it's how we're supporting our students first and foremost in our home, in their home district would be my selfish bias, you know?
Of course, yeah.
I'll just, I'll own that. And then I would say the unintended positive consequence is that we would probably net savings in doing that as well.
I think it would be helpful to get, you know, some of that information at some point, too, but, yeah, I mean, that's the piece I'm struggling with. And knowing that this is our largest class that just graduated, our numbers are going downhill from here, right? So we, we have more space every year, and I don't know, like, how are we going to get there numbers-wise? Because like I said, we might net $2 million for, for the sale of this building and to retrofit a larger building for, for the staff, and then what? Where are we getting the rest of our money every year? So that's where I'm, where I'm really struggling, I think.
Yeah, and we'll, in a couple of slides, we'll talk about some other future conversations that the board may consider as well, you know, to, to address that question.
I just wonder if we're, you know, are we not smarter looking at selling Greenwood, for example, for 7.6 or whatever? It may take longer, yes, but then it gets us a couple of years, or, I don't know, I'm just, that's the piece I, I just really struggle with, I think.
One final thing, Director Malazo, will you have a final location for us when it comes up?
The answer is yes. Two possibilities. Could be the high school. The other one could be potentially Twin Oaks, which is where our secondary equipment is as well. Already has an area that is climate-controlled HVAC. And so we have primary and secondary, and that secondary is at Twin Oaks. So those are two of the permanent locations we're looking at. So, again, it really depends on our fiber provider, Nuvera, how many strands they have running from their central office to these sites. So I am working with them to get a, dialed in on the cost for what, if that's a change order in our agreement, what does that cost look like? But those are the two that we, as a team, have discussed and also received feedback from others as well. But those are the two locations that we're currently thinking of. And we're open to suggestions, but high school, it's our only high school, right? So Twin Oaks, because we have our secondary equipment there, and it's in what we affectionately call the fish house, because it is, kind of looks like one, and it's climate-controlled, that could potentially be another location to move and make that the primary.
Is the primary D mark Twin Oaks for the entire campus, it's here?
It's here.
Because I thought it was, I thought our, I thought when, when we did the construction on the middle schools, that shut down the internet for the entire campus.
It's here.
It's here, okay.
Yep, yep. All the fiber strands run back here.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, any other questions for me?
Director Atkinson, your hand is up.
Oh, I have a general question. So if anybody else has for Director, for Director Malazo.
No, go ahead.
Yeah, so I have a question. I think Director Mesa brings up a good point. You know, graduating the largest class, is it possible to see some projections of enrollment for that high school and the middle school particularly, knowing that this, we're going to be looking at enrollment projections with, for really the two years? Because this, this wouldn't happen for two years of moving the DSC, it sounds like. So is it possible? I mean, I, I've done, I've done some checking, and Hastings, or, I'm sorry, Farmington has their DSC, their admin in the high school, Hastings has it in their middle school, East Carver County has it in their ALC building. So it's not one moment for admin to be in the building. So I, I just, I personally would like to further explore that, and I honestly think it would actually be advantageous for us to look at that, to putting our admin in the current building, because then you could sell the DSA, the DSC faster, and then you wouldn't have to wait to move with kids, the Edgewood kids.
All right, thank you.
I think the enrollment numbers, the projections, have been asked for several times and provided several times, if I'm not mistaken. And we have reviewed that today about potentially moving the DSC into the high school. So, asked and answered.
I don't think we've seen them by rolling, though, just the enrollment by building. I'm sorry, unless I'm missing something. The forecasted enrollment by the building. We have it by total number.
We have it by grade, and it's projected out for multiple years, and it keeps getting added to each year with the projection.
Okay. I, I hear you, I, we hear you.
Sorry, one more quick question.
Yes, yeah, one more quick question.
Dr. Edwards, in, as far as the high school, the six classrooms that are open, I'm just curious, in like a particular wing or pod on a level, how many classrooms are in each, like, pod areas, are we calling? I'm trying to picture it, and I'm just curious how many are.
I don't have the map with me. I have it back in my office. I, I don't have that number off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just curious, but thank you.
Moving on?
So the last couple of slides, or next couple of slides are around how we're updating our communications with our community as the iterative changes go along. And I'll turn it over to Kristy, who will talk a little bit about the dedicated website.
Good evening, Chair White, members of the board. Dr. Thomas, just like to briefly go over the communication rollout. As you know, I did create, Liz and I created a site consolidation page for the public to keep up to date with the process. We house information there that'll change as we go through this process. We have communicated with our staff and our families to date, and also, we tried to reach the wider stakeholder audience through Laker Connections, which is mail to all residents in our district. Most people should have got that in their mailboxes this past weekend. We also communicated with the Prior Lake News Compass to try to reach, again, that audience beyond our staff and families. Throughout the communications, we did also promote our input@plasas.org email address so that people could send questions and comments. All of those were monitored daily and replied to. We had about 50 total. Another point of doing that is to kind of gather those kinds of questions so that we could create a question and answer page. And there were quite a few that, if, you know, at your leisure, you can take a look at those, but we did include those on that site consolidation page. Just for purpose of going through this briefly, there were probably about four questions that rose to the top that I saw. One, why was Westwood chosen as the potential neighborhood school to close? And then, can the DSC staff be relocated to various sites throughout the district? I won't answer those here since we've already covered that, but those were two common questions. Another one was why not change or close the immersion program? That one, we, you know, responded that that has been a highly sought-after program that has been growing. So really, we want to retain and attract families, with the potential to expand that. And then another one that popped up quite a few times was where would the fifth-grade Sage students go for the '26, '27 school year? I think there was just some misunderstanding there, and the concern is about separating those families. And we, we are committed to keeping that fifth-grade cohort together in their final year of Sage. Not sure on the exact location yet, but we will keep them together as a cohort. So again, we did respond to all 50 emails. We continue to monitor it as questions trickle in, and then we will update the site consolidation page as needed as we go forward. So, any questions of me?
Anyone? All right, thank you.
So another question that has been coming up from our community, I think you all, I've seen some of the emails coming into the board as well, is around the conversation of, you know, is there a possibility of going for another levy? And I wanted to talk a little bit about that tonight, as to what are some pathways for a future conversation. Again, not promoting or advocating at this time, just really stating a matter of fact of options for the conversation. But before I do that, Dr. Zumbush will speak to some of our previous levy survey that we conducted. And again, if you recall, we did not elect to do the 30-plus thousand with Morris Leatherman. We took his findings that he said were applicable across the metro area, and then did our own survey, very similar to what they would do, but, you know, we just did our biggest outreach, and that is to our direct email serves, plus any QR codes that were distributed out, and people are passing it on. We encourage folks to share the link, et cetera. So I'll let the Dr. Zumbush talk a little bit about what we learned from that post-levy survey as well.
Good evening, Chair White, members of the board. Dr. Thomas, I just have two high-level slides to go over the post-referendum survey that Director Musman and I conducted this spring. We received 1,558 verified respondents that live within the PLSAS voting area. We did verify every respondent and then deduplicated anybody.
Uh, we did verify every respondent, um, and then deduplicated anybody, um, that had multiple responses. Um, that's our final number of respondents that were confirmed, um, to be living in the PLSAS boundary area. The first three bullets are just the breakdown of what the demographics were of the survey respondents. As you can see, um, the biggest chunk of respondents were, um, parents or guardians of current PLSAS students. Given our communication plan, um, and how we, um, connect with individuals in the voting area, I think that makes some kind of sense that the vast majority of our respondents would be, um, parents or guardians of current students. Um, we did have the vast majority of, um, the survey respondents said that they, um, those that voted on the referendum said that they did vote yes. So eighty-one percent of our respondents were vote yes, um, respondents. Obviously, that was not the outcome of the referendum, so, um, the breakdown of our survey respondents, um, were largely the ones that had voted yes on the item, um, this past fall. Uh, I did a breakdown of the, um, parents that, um, currently have students in the district. Ninety-three percent of current parents are guardians, um, who did vote on the referendum item, uh, voted yes. And then fifteen percent of non-current parents are guardians, uh, voted yes. Um, we did do a geographic analysis to see whether there was any major differences. Um, we've often heard there might be some Prior Lake or Savage differences. Uh, we did not find that in our survey respondents. Those that voted yes or no were very, uh, geographically evenly distributed across our district. Um, we did the thematic analysis of, we asked each person, uh, if they voted yes, why they voted yes, and if they voted no, why they voted no. Um, you can see, uh, those who gave, uh, qualitative responses. There was one thousand one hundred forty-three, um, individuals who responded with a reason why they voted yes. Um, and then two hundred and seventy-two who, um, explained why they voted no. And, uh, these are the major themes and they are in descending order of, uh, most frequent to least frequent within each of the categories. Any questions about that?
Anyone?
Okay. So I just wanted to share, uh, with the board, um, and I know I've talked to a couple of you, um, during our one-on-ones about this too, about what is the, the timeline, um, for possible levy conversations with our community? And if you take a look on the first column, um, if we, uh, the, one option is, uh, to go this fall, in November of twenty-five, um, to the community for, um, some type of ask, that's an option for the board. If that is something that is of interest to the board, uh, you can see then the following, uh, box. You'd have to give a resolution by July of, of twenty-twenty-five, um, wording, all that. And then by August twenty, uh, August twelfth, you'd have to notify the county. And then August twenty-second, we'd notify MDE. And then should that, you know, be something that gets supported by the community, those funds would be available in July of twenty-six. So I won't read every single column, but I just wanted you all to understand the flow of the logic in each of these columns. So then obviously, the next, um, kind of traditional would be November third of twenty-sixth, the fall of twenty-sixth. I'll come back to the May twelfth. Just keep in mind, that fall will be a very noisy election. We're going to have multiple board seats on the ballot, plus a governor's race and a host of others. So I think there will be a very, a loud noise in that, in that ballot box that, that year. So that's just given that. There's another option that you could look at going early so that you could, um, run on its own. And that would be in early spring, uh, May twelfth. But the consequent, unintended consequence of that is that, uh, there's no cost share for that levy. So we would carry that, but you would likely have a cleaner, less noisy levy. Conversation with the community, not so many other competing distractions. Then if none of these options are options that you would want to entertain and/or, um, entertained and did not get the support, the board with new statute could do a non-election, one-time renewal of the current levy that exists, um, on the books, which is the three hundred-something dollars per student with no tie to inflation. Um, you would not have to go to the voters, you would have the ability to extend that for another ten years, um, without voter approval. So that is, um, your kind of last attempt to do that on your own for an affirmative, uh, support for levy resources. The last column that's not pictured here is to let what we have completely expire and do absolutely nothing. And I didn't put that on, on this, um, at this point, so. But that's what you have to consider as a board. Should that be something, um, you want to entertain, gives you a sense of that, as well as our community. Um, and then lastly, our proposed next steps is, um, you know, there's iterative conversations that we're having with you all, whether it's with me in our one-on-ones or whether you're talking with some of our staff. Feel free to reach out, request times to sit down, um, with kind of content experts in, in each portion of the, of the proposal that you heard, um, this evening. But our, our next, uh, conversation with the board would to provide any, um, updates to the July fourteenth school board meeting, um, which would be, um, an area where we would be requesting action of the school board. And then everything else kind of holds true from our original, um, conversation with you a couple of weeks ago. So that is our update, uh, Chair White and Board Directors.
And I would strongly encourage, uh, and it was very helpful, uh, Director Powers gave me a, quite a bit of his time, uh, last week and I found it very helpful, uh, to get some real specifics, um, around the whys of what we represented and that kind of thing. So, um, if you can, take the time to, to sit down, I know it's, it was very helpful to me. If there's nothing else, we will move on to the next item on the agenda. We have an approval of a resolution, um, regarding Southwest Metro, Director, uh, Frederickson and Director Powers.
Thank you, Chair White, board members. This is the same resolution that we ask you to approve every year. Uh, we are a, a member of the Southwest Metro Intermediate School District and as such, that's totally, uh, we are responsible for sharing with them a proportional, um, amount of our LTFM levy and our Safe Schools levy. So they have sent, um, the amounts that they're calculating for our portion. And these are the two resolutions that we have for you tonight to approve.
So I'll entertain a motion on the first resolution. Motion by Director Bullion, second by Director Johnson. Any discussion? This does require a roll call. Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
The aye, that carries seven zero. Next resolution is tied to Safe School revenue.
Uh, the same explanation, we, as a member of the Southwest Metro, we are statually required to pay our portion of our Safe Schools levy to them, and this is the resolution with that amount.
Is there a motion to accept this resolution?
So made.
By Director Bullion, second by Director France. Discussion. Again, this requires a roll call. Director Olsted.
Aye.
Director Johnson.
Aye.
Director Bullion.
Aye.
Director France.
Aye.
Director Mason.
Aye.
Director Atkinson.
Aye.
And aye, that carries seven zero. And resolutions for allocation report for LTFM, Director Powers. You should know better than that.
Chair White, members of the board. Uh, this is the LTFM, um, ten-year plan that I showed you, I think it was six weeks ago, maybe two months ago. Um, there's no changes to that one. Um, as you can see on the, the bottom, the, the amounts, um, do vary year to year and that's so that we can make sure that we're being, trying to use up that, that balance that's there as effectively as we can and pull forward those jobs that are, that we're able to. And as you're looking down, uh, I think it's year eight, I don't have it right in front of me, you'll see that there's almost zero carryover and we're back to, uh, where we should be.
Okay. And this will take action on the fourteenth. Is that correct? Right? All right, moving down to policy. We have a second and final reading of Policy two oh three point five regarding meeting agendas. Either Director Johnson or Bullion want to speak to any portion of what we're presenting tonight. This is a second reading. Who will be taking action?
I think we got everyone's changes in here. That's the only thing I, I had to say in here.
Yeah, the only change that I had was to F to break it into two sentences. I didn't say how. I had sent in something a while ago on F to break it into two sentences now that we revised it after our last study session. It's just a really long one sentence.
Put a period somewhere?
Yeah. Uh, on F.
You want a period to end?
He suggests a, a word that it should follow?
Well, the first thing that I have is, do we need prepared or distributed by or at the direction of the school board or its employees and distributed to the, or to, or available to all school board members? And then do we need that piece and shall be available in the meeting room for inspection by the public? Because we already covered that the electronic version is available to school board members one week in advance. So if we take the multiple prepositions out and, and the repetition, I'm not quite sure if we're leaving something out we legally have to say.
Yeah, so, sorry. That is in open meeting law. This sentence, all of this, it, I copied and pasted it directly from our open meeting policy that we just approved.
Okay, so if it's already in there, do we need to repeat all of it here? Because the purpose of this is just to say that the, for our board meeting, uh, agenda, um, pieces, that we're going to leave a copy out there, a hard copy out there, available for the public and the electronic copy will also be available. Do we have to say, um, the, um, you know, meetings prepared or distributed by or at the direction of the school board or its employees and distributed to or available to all school board members? Because we're saying the same thing earlier and we're also saying the same thing in other policies.
We are saying the same thing in other policies.
Right.
So you can, so we could try to scratch from, what are you suggesting, Mary?
Take out, uh, so including electronic communications related to the agenda items of the meeting, take out prepared or distributed by or at the direction of the school board or its employees and distributed to or available all school board members. Cut that out and just put, shall be available in the meeting room for inspection by the public. Because it...
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
So...
In any open meeting, a copy of any printed materials, including electronic communications relating to the agenda.
Up to the word shall.
Agenda items of the meeting shall be available in the meeting room for inspection by the public while the school board considers her subject matter.
Fair enough.
I, I lost my breath reading that out loud.
It is, it is long, yes.
Nope. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to accept Policy two oh three point five with that quick revision. Is there a motion?
So made.
By Director Johnson, second.
Second.
By Director Mason. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Say aye, I'm, I'm sorry, Lisa, did you say aye?
Aye, yep.
Yep, carries seven zero. All right, administrative reports, are there any from any of you? Director Frederickson.
Uh, good evening. As you are aware, I have decided to retire at the end of this month. So this will be my last board meeting at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. I want to thank Dr. Thomas and the senior leadership team for the opportunity to serve this district over the past three years. I have deep respect for Dr. Thomas's leadership and I'm very grateful to have been a part of a committed executive team that has led through some complex challenges with integrity, collaboration, and perseverance. I'm also incredibly proud of the business office team and all the dedicated staff across our schools and district center. Their professionalism and heart for students have made this work deeply meaningful. I will always value the friendships and partnerships that built during my time here. After thirty-two years in public education, I remain passionate about this work. However, I've reached a personal and professional crossroads. While I have valued my time at Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, I've also had to reflect on the environment in which I do my best work. At times, the climate within this boardroom has posed challenges that have made it increasingly difficult to sustain the collaborative spirit that effective leadership requires. I encourage the board to reflect on the power it holds to foster a culture of trust, mutual respect, and shared purpose with the administration. These attributes are critical for any organization to thrive. And when those elements begin to erode, it becomes difficult to do the work effectively and sustainably. I leave this role with gratitude for the experience I have gained and confidence in the talented staff who continue to support the students of Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. And I wish continued success in the future for all of those who remain dedicated to its students and mission. Thank you.
Are there any other admin reports? No? Or reports? Anything to report, starting to my right?
Yes, um, I just want to say thank you to Director Frederickson. Your, your smarts on school finance are unmatched. Your intelligence knows no bounds and I appreciate you. And you, uh, have a way of explaining things as well, which is really great. And I will miss you. And I am so happy for you, um, in this next phase of your life, so thank you. I just wanted to, I lost my place, one moment. Final teaching and learning a few weeks ago, committee, uh, we will be looking at vacancies, uh, for that committee. So more to come there. Southwest Metro, we approved our strategic plan, um, which is great and has a lot more, has a lot of meat to it, which is really great. And it's a really good, really good direction for Southwest Metro. And, uh, wanted to congratulate again, uh, and reiterate Dr. Thomas's congratulations to our seniors, our kindergarten graduates, our fifth-grade graduates, and our eighth-grade graduates. Moving on to bigger and better schools and wonderfulness, so, uh, congratulations.
Thank you, Director Johnson.
Um, I'd like to echo the same thing, uh, Director Olsted said, uh, to all... Okay, to all three of you. All right. Thanks for giving me that nod there. It's been a short time, but I appreciate everything. Uh, we're going to look at policy committee here shortly to add some, some people, hopefully. And, uh, to all the seniors out there, you know, congratulations and best of luck to you and to, you know, to the eighth graders moving into ninth grade. Welcome to, uh, being the little guy again. And then, you know, fifth graders and, and everyone else, you know, enjoy your summer and, uh, we look forward to seeing you next year.
All right, thank you. Amy.
Uh, there is so much that's happened since our last regular meeting. I could touch on a ton of things, policy advisory committee. I really want to mention, uh, the Bridges graduation. The, that is a highlight every year. Graduation in and of itself is fantastic. How, how it is run, how we go through it, really streamlined. I'm, I'm just always blown away by, by how, uh, graduation is. But the, the Bridges graduation is really special. And I just want to give that a, a special shout-out. What else? Tammy, I thank you so much. I feel like in the last few years, the foundation, you have filled in cracks of the foundation of, uh, this district and, and the whole finance department. Your depth of knowledge and your breadth, breadth, I don't know what I'm saying. I always have met you, met you saying, Tammy, I need you to hold my hand, I need you to hold my hand, because I will never pretend to understand all of the ins and outs of school finance, and you do so well at holding my hand through that, helping me understand and giving me the confidence I need to make the decisions at this space. So I, I can't thank you enough. It has been such a pleasure working with you, and I wish you all the best and tons of book reading in your retirement. So thank you for all that you've done. And I too, I don't know if you two are speaking tonight about your time ending on, with Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, but to, to Dr. Edwards and Director Herman, it has been such a privilege working with you. Dr. Edwards, we've known each other for a long time, just having kids the same age, and your, your time with the district has been 31 years, it's a long time. I just want to, I just want to express my deep gratitude for you both, your professionalism, what you've brought to me when I have questions and, and more handholding, you know, you've helped me, you've helped equip me to make decisions in this space, and so for that, I am thankful.
Thank you. Mary?
Okay, so I'll start with a couple of updates and then finish with my, my gratitude also for the staff. ALC graduation Bridges, this was my 10th year going to that and my ninth year as a school board member. It's just gotten better and better. The transformation of the kids, the, the involvement of the, of the staff and the way the graduation has, not the graduation, but the actual appreciation and final dinner and celebration is, it just gets, it just gets better all the time. And the success of those students is amazing. To have that many students graduate this year was probably the largest I've ever seen. And many of them graduated with jobs already in hand, they graduated with futures that are, that are really, really impressive. And I, I credit that to the staff at Bridges and the care that they put into it, and also the district leadership for allowing that to flourish, and actually flourish somewhat unabated and, and ungoverned and trust the teachers there to do what's right, which is really heartwarming. Hope to go to many more and be just as equally, if not more impressed with each one. I, Scale had a couple of meetings. One was the executive meeting as well as the regular meeting. Of course, the regular meeting, this was our last time talking about waste management, and I learned more about anaerobic digestion than I ever think I ever wanted to know. But what the message is, is that it's really cheaper to recycle, and that without better policies and also the impact of the lack of federal funding for those sites now, we are going to see tax increases just for garbage, which is insane. And so they've asked that if, if everyone to please recycle as much as possible, it will do us all a benefit, both from a climate benefit, but also from a tax and for a land usability benefit. And by the way, I realize what Biochar was in the process and everything else, so kudos to them for that. As far as myself and saying goodbye to the administration staff that's here, I, I've been in this role for now nine years, and I can tell you that the, the administration that sits in front of me right now is the best it has ever been. And particularly Dr. Fredrickson, or Director Fredrickson, I just promoted you, by the way. We went from fighting to get any financial information to someone who has spilled it out, out of their ears in ways that I didn't even know was possible to combine in order to help both the community and, and the board understand the finances. I, I am so impressed. And I also want to reiterate that the, the award that was received is truly phenomenal, and the work that went into that, and the elevation that it gave our district was, was beyond comparison to previous years. All I can say is that when you took this role and I started to see the results almost immediately, I immediately and unconditionally trusted those numbers because they made sense. And there, there's nothing hidden, everything's out there, it is combined 10 ways to Sunday and broken down even more. So I, I just want to say thank you for the hard work, and I know that that work was not a nine-to-five job. It was a 24/7, 365 job, and, and hopefully you can now rest, 365, 24 by 7. But I do, I appreciate that. And Director Herman, I can say in my nine years that since you took over not only negotiations and the contracts and started reviewing things and started going over the policies with a fine-tooth comb, that our relationship, I think overall with the admin, with, between the administration and our various bargaining units and staff improved tremendously, in ways that I didn't even think were possible. I, I believe that there's no one that can doubt your knowledge as well as your integrity in that space also. Matter of fact, I've likened you to Data from Star Trek once in a while, just because you have stuff from statutes to, to histories to whatever on the tip of your tongue, and you remain unbiased and unemotional as you're delivering that information, which is critical for the role. So I know that wherever your career takes you, it, it will always be successful. And Dr. Edwards, I've of course known you for the nine years that I've been here, starting off as a, as a middle school principal, and then moving up, I've seen a lot of changes, and I've appreciated the relationship that we have built, and I appreciate the work that you have done and how your caring for the students has just been impress, impressive to say the least. It's, it's been understated, I think, in how it comes out. I, I see you work every day, and I am, I'm more in awe of your ability to relate not only to kids but also to staff. So thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mary. Jessica?
Yeah, a lot, but not in the last month, but I feel like the, the big things I want to raise, we had our last SEEK meeting in May, so that was great. We have a growing group and look forward to next year and growing that group more. And then I just wanted to also comment on graduation and congrats to the class of 2025. It was the first graduation I've been to, and I was so impressed with, with the whole thing. It was a perfect night. Thank you to the staff, and I can't imagine how many volunteers put that together, and just really overall, the, the behavior of the students was perfect and, you know, just a really great event. So congratulations to that class. Yeah, and also want to say thank you to the three of you. Been here just a few short months, it feels like, but I really appreciate the time that you've spent to explain things and to just bearing with us with probably some dumb questions at times, but as, as I'm learning here. So thank you for that, and I wish you all well.
Director Atkinson, do you have anything to share?
Yeah, well, I don't have, the last meeting I was at a time for, for ECFEs, so I apologize for that. I spent a crazy couple of months here. Graduation obviously was a highlight. It's so great to see all those smiles. I mean, it totally makes what we do on a daily basis, for every, every, every hour, every minute that we spend at this board table, knowing that those decisions impact on a daily basis. Congratulations to the admin. When one door closes, one door opens. I'm excited to see where you guys go and what your future holds. And for Tammy, gosh, I'm sure you're looking forward to spending time in retirement, and it's something that we can all aspire to, is a little bit more time off, resting, relaxing, and spending time with our families. So thank you.
Okay.
Chair White?
Yes.
I'm very sorry. I didn't realize that this was their last time. May I have 20 seconds?
You can have 30 if you want.
Thank you. I, I do apologize. I didn't realize it was your last meetings as well. Dr. Edwards, thank you for everything. You have a, what?
Say it again. We have the 16th, but, okay.
Just Tammy, Tammy's last.
It's your, um.
These two are coming back next week.
Yes, but it's the last board meeting. Okay. Understood, understood. Yes. So you're stuck with us for one more week. Okay, got it. But I just wanted to be on record here, Dr. Edwards, you have such a heart for kids, and it's evident every day. In my dealings with you, I have had conversations with you on a personal level that I've appreciated, and I just, you have such a heart, and you are going to soar in your next role, and I'm so confident in that for you, and I'm so happy for you. Emily, sorry, Director Herman, you have, you put the human in human resources, and that is not something that a lot of human resources people can do. And no offense to any HR people out there. But I truly mean it, you have, you have a heart for kids and the staff, and that's not easily done. It's not something you can teach, it's not something you learn in school, it's just inherent, and you have it. And I'm so happy for you. Yeah, those doors wide open for the three of you, and I'm, I'm so grateful, thank you for your service to our district.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you for letting me do that.
No, not a problem. I'm just going to echo everything everybody said, and I look forward to sitting down with all three of you privately before you head out the door to have a chat, and I'm looking forward to that and to say thank you in, in, in that way. So if there's nothing else to come before the board, you have future events listed below, most importantly, the study session next Monday. At this time, I will entertain a motion to enter into a closed session for the purposes of discussing negotiation strategy. Is there a motion? By Director Johnson, second.
Second.
By Director Mason. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
That carries seven zero. Let's take five minutes to let everybody get organized back here at 9:21.